All right, we're gonna bring this open session of our city council meeting for the City of Crescent City on September 6th, 2016. First of all, is there anything to report out of closed session?
No action to report this evening.
All right, thank you. Can you take role, please?
Councilmember Holly?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Mayor Protem Inscore?
Here.
Mayor Gastineau?
I am here, and Mayor Protem Inscore will lead us in the flag salute.
Ready and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so we've moved some things around in our agenda. We are now going to public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can refer to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments shall be directed towards the entire council. Any comments that are not at the microphone or out of order will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. The public is additionally allotted three minutes each in which to speak on any other item on the agenda and any action taken by the council. Okay, is there any public comment? Please come on up.
Good evening. My name is Nana Westhall, and I live in the city. First, I'd like to welcome our new city manager, David Vandermark, and I'm happy to hear you believe in transparency and excellence in service. Next, I'm requesting that you agendize a discussion on policy regarding who can use the conference room at the sewer plant. Brief background: Taxes fund the federal program called the Clean Water Act. That funds the state for such things as state revolving loan fund, which loans the city 43.8 million to upgrade and expand the sewer plant. Ratepayers on the hook to pay back the loan. So from a number of perspectives, it is offensive to think that our local taxpayers' association, a 501(c)(3) group, is denied access to reserving the room because current policy is that only city employees can use the room for city business, so please reexamine the policy. Second, the NPDES permit and fines. At the last council meeting, new business item 13 was a discussion of fines levied because the city violated affluent limits. I'm glad this came up. From what I've been told by reliable sources, before the upgraded and expanded plant was finished, some of the numbers were reported to the state on a monthly basis were made up. Let me put that another way. A former employee was told to manipulate the numbers to bring them into compliance for the report that was sent monthly to the state. He wouldn't, and then he was filed for insubordination. Let me tell you about my sources. First, former city manager Dean Plaza called me into his office and told me that the employee was fired for insubordination. Then later, the employee that told me he believed he was fired because former public works director Jim Parks told him to manipulate the numbers to make them in compliance. Plus, I spoke to someone from the legal community, so that's three sources. I didn't bother asking Jim Parks, our former public works director, because I could never get a straight answer out of Jim. Now, on measure Q, the city's rebuttal incorrectly inserted that I was censured for slandering my fellow council members. That is incorrect. I wasn't censured for slandered. I was censured for asking questions like this. One, I'd like to know if the controls could be manipulated. Two, I'd like to know if the numbers were manipulated. How many times was the city actually out of compliance between 2007 and 2011? Three, who would be responsible if that was the case? Four, while sitting on the city council, I didn't know, and I'm almost finished. We were subject to fines, and although I can see that whoever signs the month report is subject to fine imprisonment for knowing violations. Five, if the controls were manipulated in the past, I'd like to know if that can still happen in our system today. Six, if the city pays a $3,000 fine per violation, where do the funds come from? Ratepayers? And lastly, what does this board intend to do about the issue? I seriously hope you will investigate because, in my opinion, this was not handled correctly in the past.
Thank you. Can you get that list to our clerk, please? Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, we are closing public comment, and we're gonna go on to reports and presentations. There are none. We are on to our consent calendar. On the consent calendar is four items. We have August 15th, 2016, regular council meeting minutes, two warrant claims list, three payroll report, and four fiscal year 17 wastewater treatment operator position control. Is there anything on the consent calendar we need to know about, Mr. Vandermark? Are we good? All right, thank you. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring you back to the council. Is there any motions?
I'd move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes, that passes unanimously. All right, we have no ceremonial items, we have no public hearings, we have no housing authority meeting, and we have no successor agency meeting. We have no continuing business. We are on a new business now. Item number five, discussion for approval request for reimbursement of overpaid sewer charges. Mr. Vandermark? Right there is fine.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I brought to your attention, and it's in your packet tonight, as you all know, and we discussed last night, we had a booth at the fair, and I was approached by Mr. Dennis Sutton, who had also had a booth at the fair, who was explaining to me that when he purchased properties on North Crest, he was told by the city staff member at the time, and again, this was many years ago, that he needed to pay the monthly sewer fee in order to maintain his sewer connections on that property, those two properties, which had previously had structures but had been demolished by the, when he bought the property. So he dutifully paid monthly sewer fees, our records show, and then they concur with his from July 2nd, 2001 through January 2016. He paid a total of $14,578.48, and my recommendation to the council is to repay him the money that is owed, that he paid unfortunately, mistakenly to the city. This does support the strategic plan goal three, maintaining responsible fiscal management and accountability. It is also honoring stated values of accountability, honesty, and integrity, transparency, excellent customer service, and fiscal responsibility.
All right, thank you. Any technical questions for Mr. Vandermark? Is there any comments? Go ahead.
I just have one quick question. Mr. Vandermark, if, if he builds structures on those properties, the, the prior sewer hookup fees would be valid, and he would not owe any additional fees?
Absolutely, yes. As is with true with any property, if a sewer hookup fee is paid, even if you don't have a structure when you pay it, and later you build a structure, or if you had one and it was, and it was demolished, then that sewer connection fee, system development fee, is good for the entire time you own the property. Now, if you happen to have one for a property and you wanted to build a complex, you would get credit for that one, maybe single-family house toward whatever it is you're trying to build that might be larger than that.
Okay, thank you. I just need...
And one of the things, I had a council ask me earlier if we thought there were a whole bunch of these. I did talk to the people who, luckily, we have someone with institutional knowledge in the utility billing department, and they're 25, 26 years. And there are a few folks that she's aware of who've had concerns over the years, and some may come forward. I know I got a letter today, and she's doing some, Deborah is doing some research on that for us. So I don't know if we're gonna end up with multiple of these situations, but I certainly will be bringing to you should they arise.
Good deal.
Okay, and then, of course, the obvious question, does that come out of our sewer budget?
Yes, it would come out of our sewer budget, as it was paid into our sewer budget.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Nope? Okay, no public comment, I'm gonna close public comment on this, bring it back to the council.
I will move to approve the reimbursement request of overpaid sewer charges for Mr. Dennis Sutton in the amount of $14,578.48.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. Okay, on to item number six of news business, excuse me, fiscal year 2016, 17 project budget updates. Mr. Vandermark?
Yes, I'm going to defer to the finance director, Linda Lever, for this.
Ms. Lever, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor Gastineau and members of the council. This is basically a housekeeping item. This item is to request approval to update several project budgets that are in our fiscal year 17 budget. The city has several projects that take place over more than one fiscal year. When we put together the fiscal 17 budget in April and May, we made estimates of how far along those projects would be by the end of the fiscal year, and we budgeted the remainder of the project for fiscal 17. Now that the fiscal 16 has actually ended, and we've received all of our invoices and got everything posted, we've taken a look at those estimates, and there are some adjustments that need to be made. It's important to note that we are not requesting any changes to the projects themselves. The revenues and expenditures are all staying, excuse me, exactly what they were approved originally. This is just to update how much was in fiscal 16 and how much is in fiscal 17, but between the two years, there is no overall change. The details for each project are in your agenda packet. I can go through them if you like, or just answer any questions. Otherwise, our recommendation is just to approve the resolution 2016-36 to update the budget to reflect the actual amounts remaining.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Lever? Nope? Thank you very much. Is there any public comment on this issue? All right, seeing no public comment, close it, bring it back to the council. Is any more discussion? Is there a motion? Move to approve?
I'll second that motion.
All right. Is that motion good enough, council? Or does he have to go through the whole?
We approve resolution number 2016-36, amending the fiscal year 2016/17 budget for fiscal year 15/16 multi-year projects carried over.
Thank you. Is that better, Mr. Mayor? In a second?
Yes, I still say.
All right, so we do have a motion, a second. Please, pull the vote.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes, thank you. That actually ends all of our agendized items for tonight. So now we're on to city council meeting, our items. Any legislative matters? Nope? All right, city manager report. Mr. Vandermark?
Yes, we have two items under my report. I believe one was taken care of under the number four in the consent calendar, the wastewater treatment classification update.
So that one was...
So I believe that one has already been handled. And the fire truck update, I'm going to defer to public works director Eric Weir.
All right, Mr. Weir, come tell us about our new wheels.
Is that a little bit better? All right. Eric Gastineau, members of the council. So this is just an update on our ICBG project and the Phase II of the ICBG project, which was to purchase a new fire engine for the city. So as you are well aware, I'm sure ICBG is the Indian Community Development Block grant, which the city is in partnership with the Elk Valley Rancheria on. The grant was for approximately $600,000, of which the city then had to match an additional $200,000. So a total of about $800,000. It was split between two components, first component being the building modernization piece, which is going towards improvements of the fire hall. Second piece was to purchase a new fire engine. So about $400,000 was available. City staff worked with the Elk Valley Rancheria to put out an RFP. We received four proposals. Received one from Ferrera, one from a company called E1, and then two from Rosenbauer. The, we probably could put that up on the screen, I'm assuming, have a little spreadsheet that kind of went through and identifies the different components of each of the trucks, as well as the price, so we can put that on the screen for the council, as well as the public. The proposals ranged in cost from 403,000, approximately 403,000, to 487,000. City staff, as well as the rancheria staff, were, were put together in a selection committee. The committee was comprised of myself, we had Jason Borges, the lead fleet mechanic, we had Steve Wakefield. Councilman Short was also on it from the fire department side to review the actual components of the, of the truck. We had a rancheria team that also was comprised of four members. You had Krista Stewart, their grant operations manager, Dan Huff, their finance director, their purchasing agent, and Dale Miller, the chairman for the rancheria. So you can see that, that these are the, the top row indicates the price, again, 403 up to 487,000. I'll grab a mouse real quick. And we can kind of scroll through. A lot of the trucks were, were similar, all could meet the delivery date, which was 90 days, which is a very fast turnaround, but one that the grant had, had basically specified that we had to meet. So this truck, if we can get the purchase order out, will be here before the end of the year, so it'll be in service at that time. The selection committee unanimously recommended the Ferrera. It not only is the cheapest as far as the cost goes, but also was the most complete engine, and could be, it's a brand-new engine instead of a demo, a lot of these other ones were demo units, but they had the frame and chassis already built, so this was ready to go, it just had to meet our specifications. So now they can customize that frame and chassis to meet our specifications. So this will be a, an engine that'll be able to produce 200,000 GPM as far as the pump capacity goes.
It's 2,000.
2,000, what did I say?
200,000.
200,000, that would be a heck of a pump. 2,000 is still a very good pump. You have 450 horsepower engine, which will make sure that we can get up Crescent Hill, which is a problem, as Councilman Short can attest to, to try to make that hill for the car accidents that it'll be responding to. 750-gallon tank, as well as it meets the requirements for the, the truck length and height to fit in our current station. So those are all important components. So at this point, though, the overall cost of the truck, 403,000, exceeds the grant funding amount, which was slightly over 400,000. So it's about $2,500, approximately over what we had allocated for this component. We can use the existing contingency that the council has already budgeted for this total combined project, we can take those funds out of that. I feel we'll still be within that, that contingency amount to finish both the building modernization, seismic retrofit, and purchase the truck with those funds. So that is, that is the update on the fire hall project. Overall update, still progressing smoothly, working through issues with asbestos abatement, as well as, as some dry rot that we are encountering now, but that is why we set aside those contingency funds and were able to work within them so far. So we're looking at hopefully completing the project by the end of October, is still the, still the hope.
I, real quickly, the, the trucks, I apologize if I missed this. Are these new trucks? Is this a new truck?
These, these are, yes, they're, they're new. We also allowed a demo unit. So a lot of times you'll have fire trucks that will be, will be displayed around, and so they, they could propose on a demo truck. The two Rosenbauer trucks were demo trucks, and that's how they were able to meet the, you can see the less than 90 days for their specification, as well as the E1, it was also a demo. The Ferrera, the one that was selected by a selection committee, is a brand-new truck.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. That was, that was a big discussion point, and very important, because those other three trucks, they're already built, we don't get to say what they look like, how the compartments are configured, and, and on the Ferrara, we can do that. So it was a, a big plus, in addition to the cost savings.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weir. Okay. Anything else on the city manager report?
No, sir.
All right. Okay, reports, concerns, referrals, travel, and training from the council. Who wants to go first? When's the last council meeting? Two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, all right. I just started school again, so my brain's out there again, so. Ah, go ahead, Mr. Short.
Yes, sir. Um, right after the last council meeting on the 17th, we attended the Redwood Coast Transit meeting at the complex there on Williams Drive, got a tour there, very informative.
Oh yeah, if anybody wants to buy a bus, they're pretty cheap there.
There's nine of them out there, yes.
They don't run, but you can get them for 150, you can get them for 150 bucks.
Wanted to apologize to the people of Crescent City, I missed the tri-agency meeting, do a, do a calendar posting mistake of my own there. Went to the multi-small business mixer, that was an impressive event there at, at Enoteca downtown, that was well-attended. First Friday event, this last, this last Friday, that the, that the Divas arranged, was also very well-attended, and a nice event to, to attend. And then, of course, the Find Your Park event this last Saturday, which was a, a load of fun. There was lots of stuff going on, very impressed with, with that event, and I really wanted to commend Kimmy, even though she's not here tonight, but she did a great job of setting that up, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Murray?
Thank you. Seems like there were quite a few things that I was able to participate in. Mayor Protem Inscore and I attended a healthcare meeting, two-by-two-by-two with the county and the healthcare district on the 16th, with two members from the Quorum company, and it was, I think, very fruitful. They were interviewing quite a few members from the community. Quorum was, the key interview person was Jeff Abler, and what I took away from it was that the healthcare district is looking to expand healthcare services in the community, and Quorum is taking an assessment on where the gaps are in services and how the healthcare district can help fill those. So I thought that that was very positive, and I'm looking forward to the report that they'll provide to, with us. And then on Friday, I went down to Arcata for the, my final, it's kind of bittersweet, the Redwood Empire Division meeting that was hosted by the City of Arcata, and it was quite educational. We had our business meeting, and then we had a tour of Arcata's affordable housing projects after a number of presentations, and I learned quite a bit about what different communities Eugene, Oregon, the City of Arcata, and the City of Eureka are doing to help shelter people who have no housing. So I took quite a few notes, in case anybody's interested. And then we had a nice network and reception at the Plaza Grill that evening, so that was, and then we, I got to say goodbye to all the city council members and city managers that attended, and of course, Sarah Round, so I really appreciated attending that. The next day, we had the salmon festival down in Clamath, and it was a huge turnout, even though they weren't serving salmon, which I really honor the tribe for making that decision based on ecological reasons. And we had the triathlon here the next day, Sunday, I think it was the 33rd annual triathlon, and they had more people turning out for that, and there were kids of all ages, so I was really proud of the community for turning out and appreciative of all the volunteers that helped with the, the whole event. We also had, let's see, the next week, I had the opportunity to go to the ad hoc Veterans Homeless meeting on the 24th, and then the multi-chamber mixer at Enoteca. And that was quite a really good event, and I heard a lot of people comment about that was probably one of the best chamber mixers that they had attended. And then I just wanted to acknowledge, I attended the library board meeting on August 25th, and I wanted to send my condolences and to both Tina's family and to the family at the library for the loss of their, their loved one. That was very difficult. And then on, also that day, later that day, I did the, the Del Art Literacy Project tour at College of the Redwoods, which Gary Blatnick and Melody Fugate offered that tour for me, and that was, it's really exciting to hear about the project, for every kindergartner to be kindergarten-ready and literate by 2023. So I'm hoping that we will support that project when they come and do a presentation to the city council in the form of adopting a resolution supporting the project, just... And then I also, the next day, I had been invited to interview one of our young people who are in the health, health, healthcare industry. He's a physician's assistant at the community clinic, and I did that with Rachel, Rachel Mallor, that works in the, in the program, and I participated in that on Friday, the 26th, and there'll be a follow-up meeting later on next month. So that was really enlightening to see what motivates young people to get into the career health, health ways. to see what motivates young people to get into the career healthways pathway and to- and why they want to either go away to school and then come back to our community. So that's something that we've been trying to find, what it is that motivates them, and then what makes them want to come back and stay in the community. And I think that we're on the right track in working with our youth to get them to do that, because we really need them here. Then the airport had a meeting with the Oregon Department of Aviation on the 30th, and we also had a meeting, a regular airport meeting, on Thursday, the 1st, where we launched into the second phase of the airport terminal, which is really exciting. And I also volunteered for the Friday Night Live, the second one that we've had downtown. And it looks like we had another huge success there, a big turnout, even with the wind that was kind of making people miserable. And then the Find Your Park event, thank you, Kimmy Scott, even though she's not here. That was a huge success, in my opinion. And I guess we're looking forward to whether or not we'll have it again. But that was quite an event. And I also attended a organized labor picnic in Sequoia Park yesterday down in Eureka. So those are my-
You're gonna follow her, Mr. Holly?
You're not gonna make me follow that, are you? I don't have a lot, but they're high-quality. So you need to know that. I did attend the tri-agency meeting, and unfortunately, Mr. Short was unable to do that. But it was a really good meeting. The Economic Advisers Group was present, who are some of the leading businessmen in the community. And they actually spoke to the- what they had accomplished historically, and how tri-agency came about, and the interactions between the two. And they're going to be increasingly more involved, I think, with a number of economic efforts in our area over time. So it was- I wish I'd had that four and a half years ago when I started with tri-agency, because it was really beneficial. So I also did attend the Find Your Park functions. I did- I went to the opening comments, I guess. I don't know if it fell short of a ceremony, but I heard the eloquent comments from the mayor and Councilmember Murray. But following that, I went to the farmer's market and enjoyed that very much. The next day, I did attend the art show that was down at the cultural center. And that was really beautifully displayed, and there was a lot of enthusiasm down there. And I was down there to see the art, and then following that, I participated with the Dixie Land Rangers, and we played kind of a benefit for the art show. So that was fun, and Kimmy helped set that up. Unfortunately, it was right at the tail end of the art show, and people were already leaving, and we didn't know if it was us or what, but-
It was like our opening ceremony.
That's right. So that's my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Inskor.
Thank you. I did attend with Councilmember Murray the meeting with the healthcare district along with Quorum. And I was very encouraged by the healthcare district's kind of change in approach and looking at how do we provide the very best quality healthcare for our community. And it's been a real uphill battle, I know, for our community. And I think that we've got some good things coming ahead. Had a LAFCO meeting, had a Chamber Executive Board meeting, had a Visitor Bureau strategic planning meeting, where we also had the Council of Economic Advisers represented, and gave us some history about the formation of Visitor Bureau back in 2006, along with looking at the initial marketing plan. And I think that that provided us some historical background to take a look at the Visitor Bureau going forward. So that was a very productive meeting. We spent about three and a half hours together with that. Tended the pre-meeting, leader meeting for the homeless evaluation liaison program to talk about our next upcoming meeting in two weeks with the public, as we begin to strategize, how do we take all these ideas that have been presented and start targeting things that we can accomplish, as opposed to just things that we're talking about. And that was very productive. Did attend Find Your Park. I went to the opening ceremonies and stood next to Mr. Holly. That was my accomplishment during the opening ceremonies. I thought- think that the event was pretty well-attended. I didn't hear any real negatives, and so that's always a good thing. I was very excited about the art show at the cultural center. It was exciting to see not only our local artisans having things on display, but to see nearly half of the Florence Keller paintings all up in the cultural center, I think, given the history of that building and the tie to the Kellers. And to see them all on display says a lot about some of the things that we're trying to do. And it also opened us up to the opportunity to realize that we have, through our local artisans, some partners, that if we work together, we may find some renewed use for that building. I talked to our Public Works Director. The Redwood Coast Art Association mentioned to me and took me aside and wanted to talk to me about it, and said that if we could address some of our lighting issues in the cultural center, is there- there's a strong likelihood that we could have a couple, three art shows as annual events right here in Crescent City. That that's the only real negative that the artisans mention is the lighting. And so we're going to start looking at how do we do that? I mean, if we can put together two more events here, simply by changing out some light bulbs, albeit some expensive light bulbs, then maybe we need to look forward with some of those things. So it was exciting. Not only that, but they had a raffle, and found out this afternoon, my wife was a winner of one of the Florence Keller prints. And so now we're excited to have that and put that up in our home, and begin to purchase others as they are done. And I would encourage Crescent City to look into Redwood Coast Art Association and pick up some of those prints. Just remember, when you choose to buy a Florence Keller print, you're helping to not only support arts here in Crescent City and Delart County, but you're also helping with the rehabilitation of all of those paintings and making sure that they are here to be enjoyed by the generations that follow. So it's a great opportunity to be a part of that. Also, as a conclusion to Find Your Park, joined with a plethora of people, I hope I don't miss anybody for the cleanup yesterday. Not only we have city employees there, we had Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Sea Cadets, Team Home Depot, Team Walmart, the Lions Club, Take a Bite Out of Blight, the Interfaith Fellowship Council, Just Serve. Did I miss anybody, Roger? Does that sound like everybody? It was awesome. We had 65 people from a variety of groups who came together to literally scour all of beachfront park and the rocks and the beach. And it may be that beachfront park is as clean right now as it has been in years. It was a great, great project, and I'm so thankful to the volunteers who come out and help. So that's my report.
Thank you.
Oh, I got one more thing.
All right.
I would like to- I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, if the council is in agreement, I would like to ask to direct staff to begin doing some looking at establishing a more comprehensive policy regarding the use of city facilities with the fact that we will soon have a revitalized and remodeled fire hall with a new kitchen and meeting facilities. I think it's appropriate that what Ms. Westfall pointed out about using the conference room at the wastewater treatment plant provides us an opportunity to talk about all of our city facilities. So if the council is in agreement, I think that it would be wise for our staff to begin drafting an updated policy for us to look at for the use of our facilities.
Yep. We're in agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Let's see. Well, I did have the- I attended a Delart Solid Waste Management Authority with Mr. Inskor on the 16th, Redwood Transit Authority with Mr. Short on the 17th. And then we got into the great stuff. The Downtown Divas Live, Friday Night Live was great. It's coming together. I think it's going to just grow, you know, regardless of all the negativity that might come out, that some merchants think that it's not a good thing for downtown. Businesses were rocking down there, and people were walking around, and it was a good event. And it's only going to get better. So, you know, come on board and, you know, start, you know, supporting stuff, not trying to tear it down, and everything downtown will come together. Then, you know, Find Your Park, it was just amazing. And probably the biggest complaint is that our park is too big. That's it. It was spread all over the park, and there's no way that you can really judge how many people are going to be down there, because everything was all over the place. And there were a lot of people. And, you know, bringing it in, I think possibly in the future, you know, we have sporting events going on there, and it'll take a lot of space out of that place and bring a lot more of it together. And as we move forward as a city and we develop that plaza area with, you know, our amphitheater and stuff like that, where we can have more citywide events that are concentrated down there, it's going to really- the park is going to just grow. So it was an awesome event. Get out to your parks. That's why we're here in Delart County, because we all love the outdoors. Not only our city parks, our county parks, and our state and federal parks. So everybody get out there. And it was great. And Kimmy Scott, who is our city clerk, which I totally spaced on during my speech, but like I said, and I got a good recovery, she's much more than our city clerk. So- so she does so much for the city and for the community. So we all appreciate all the effort and everybody's other effort that put in there. All the other community members come together to make that incredible event. So. Okay. So it looks like we, you know-
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. There is one item that we neglected, and I'll ask Mr. Weir to come back up. There was a question asked at the last meeting when we announced, when we were talking about the $21,000 worth of fines, the seven issues over the last five years. Because somebody asked, how were we doing before we rebuilt the plant? And Mr. Weir?
Okay. Come on up, Mr. Weir. So, so in my conclusion-
Oh, sorry. I thought you were moving on to the next agenda item, Your Honor.
That's okay. I'll tell you when I'm going to move it on. All right. So on my conclusion, everybody get out and get out to the parks, and it was a great event. I think I'm done. Thank you. Mr. Weir?
All right. Well, that's a tough act to follow. But yes, so talking about the sewer treatment plant and previous ACL. So the question was asked when we reported on the current ACL, that we're under the administrative civil liability complaint, in which we have the $21,000 fine. How much were our fines before we did the treatment plant? So I did some research, and the one right before the treatment plant was reconstructed, addressed a time period from January 1st, 2000, through May 31st, 2007. It's the Administrative Civil Liability Complaint, R1-2007-0061. This actually lists 36 total effluent violations themselves, ranging from average BOD, call form, monthly average BOD, all the way down to weekly average oil and grease, monthly average oil and grease, totaling a total of $69,000 in fines and effluents. But then it also lists, I believe it's seven SSO or sanitary sewer overflow events, in which were related to the upgrade of the headworks, which was completed during the treatment plant. So if you remember back to those times, we had some big storms that came through. We had INI that came into the treatment plant. Treatment plant couldn't handle it. So because the pumps couldn't handle it, as the sewer's starting to rise, rather than flood the headworks and flood the pumps completely, what happens is the gates basically shut, for the most part, at the plant. And so that forces the sewers to come out all over town. And so we had several events like this. There was also a- they put in storm pumps back in 2003, which was actually my first week that I had worked for the city. And so I remember going down to that event. The storm pumps kicked on. It actually raised a manhole out of the ground at the treatment plant and resulted in a- resulted in millions of gallons of discharge of partially treated. So in the end, what they came up with was that the city actually had a total fine of over $88 million. And the- and I, you know, I wish I was joking, but there is the, you know, look up the administrative civil liability. $88,520,000 was the total. They took the determination that because the city was doing what we were to address this issue, because we were a disadvantaged community, basically, they reduced that down to a total of- let me find it here- to a total of $125,000. But the total fines could have resulted in over $88 million. So that's the- that was the ACL before we did the treatment plant. Now we have our current one, which is $21,000 for the violations that we discussed last time.
Thank you. $88 million. That's twice the cost. No, sorry, we're done. With that, is there any other business? Nope. I'm going to adjourn this meeting until our next meeting, which will be, what's, September 21st?